It's six o'clock and it's time to begin our regular meeting. We have Pastor Matthew Barney that we've asked to lead the prayer. And Lieutenant, or Captain Cook, I ought to remember Captain Cook, to do the pledge. So, Matthew?
We decided another meeting.
Shall we stand?
Good evening. We do the pledge after, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. So, we've been, I've been given a list of people. If you would agree with me in prayer for these families. Father, we lift up to you the family of Juan Ray, the family of Joy Luckman, Eric Hillard, the family of Charlotte Foster, the family of Larry Raymond Redmond, my apologies, Camilla Garrison, Manny Malone, and Billy Brown. Father, we lift these specific needs up to you, and we thank you that in each circumstance you are already working to meet needs, bring healing, and bring restoration. And we bless you and we thank you for that. Father, as we open this meeting, we thank you that you have given us the right in this country to gather and to meet and to discuss, and Lord, we are encouraged to have opinions. What we would ask tonight is that each of us, whatever we've brought with us, whatever concerns, whatever we want to share, whatever we want to discuss, Lord, that we would always do it in a framework that says, "I want to bring peace to my community. I want to be uplifting to my neighbor. I want to be encouraging, respectful to authority." So, we pray for your grace and your favor over this gathering tonight. We pray for individual concerns and individual discussion. Father, pray for our leaders who have come to serve, who put in their time and desire to see a good outcome. So, we, tonight, we put aside personal agendas and ask that we would put first your agenda. Father, rather than seeking for you to bless what we're doing, we ask that we would seek what you are blessing, and we would put our energy and our time and our effort and our finances in that. We praise you and we thank you in Jesus Christ's mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Matt. Captain?
Apology. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We may be seated.
Tyler, will you come to the front, please, and your parents? For you, Allen and audience, this is Mr. Tyler Thompson. He is the junior quarterback for the Marshall County Tigers. We are doing a proclamation.
Coach. Come up here with us. Coach over. Let's give Coach a...
Okay, this is a little lengthy, so bear with me. This is a proclamation for our Rising Star Tyler Thompson Day, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas Tyler Thompson, the son of Rachel and Randy Thompson from Lewisburg, Tennessee, has showed exceptional skills, leadership, as the junior quarterback for the Marshall County Tigers. And whereas Tyler Thompson, a member of the class of two thousand and twenty-six, has been awarded the prestigious title of Class 4A Mr. Football, recognizing his outstanding performance on the field. And whereas Tyler Thompson has led the Marshall County Tigers to the Region Five dash Four A Championship, achieving an impressive record of twelve to one. And whereas Tyler Thompson's remarkable achievements in the two thousand and twenty-four football season includes being named two thousand and twenty-four Tennessee Titan Class 4A Mr. Football winner, Region Five dash Four A Most Valuable Player, and being selected as the Tennessee Football Coach Association's First Team All State Quarterback. Whereas Tyler Thompson's stats for the season are outstanding, with a hundred and eighty-two completions out of two sixty-seven passes, passing attempts, sixty-eight percent for two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four yards, forty-five touchdown passes, and only seven interceptions, rushed for more than eleven or more touchdowns, and total of fifty-six touchdowns for the year. And whereas the city of Lewisburg recognizes and appreciates the dedication, the hard work, and the sportsmanship demonstrated by Tyler Thompson, which has brought pride and recognition to our community. Whereas the city of Lewisburg also extends gratitude to the Marshall County High School football coaches and to the team for their valuable support and contribution to Tyler Thompson's success. Now, therefore, I, Jim Bingham, Mayor of the City of Lewisburg, do hereby proclaim January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Rising Star Tyler Thompson Day in the City of Lewisburg, and encourages all citizens to join in the celebrating of Tyler Thompson's outstanding achievements and positive example he sets forth for our youth. In witness, whereas I have under to sign my hand and cause the seal, with the city seal of Lewisburg to affix this January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Everybody that's here, players, thank you. Y'all have done a great job.
Also, while we take this picture, Green Mitchell, former neighbor of mine, has spoken, former neighbor of mine, is here, as he has distinguished himself.
Heard you as well.
For proud of all, even the coach.
If you need to, you need me to hand them out, help speed up the process. I sure will.
We're not through, we recognize you, people.
Thank you, sir. Thank the mayor.
I can't think of the quarterback's names. Jacksonville Jaguars.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
He got that hair like it, too.
We're writing the picture actually.
Yeah.
We try half a month, then there'd be another one, another angle.
Sit there.
Yeah.
You gotta embrace it.
Yeah.
Deanne Schultz. We can do Deanne. She worked several years prior. I hope she started helping y'all peril. You hear Thomas? Service. You got them? Okay, then go to the firemen. Dwayne Dixon, where are you?
Dog. Dog. Dog.
It's called a lot worse, man. Huh? Why you come on in here? I know, you gotta do this one.
Billy Richards, the public firsts. Come on, Brad.
All right, we keep climbing in years. Dennis Fattan. On my calculation, that's a quarter century. Thank you so much for your service. Okay, we're supposed to look something. It's a long time. Another quarter century. Kathy Robinson.
I didn't think of that, man, my bad, man. I, I, okay, I get you, man, I'll remind you next time. I didn't think of that.
Okay, we're still on the quarter century. Jason Davis, Fire Department.
Quick twenty-five years.
Y'all need to squat sandwich.
Yeah, I know, I've noticed.
He said, "Soon as you graduate, ask him." He said, "You'll have two years." That you'll blink and be ten. He said, "Well, you know you'll be ten."
Thirty years, Richard Cook, Fire Department.
But now, I'm never forget this.
Sir, a little over three years, it'll be a third of the century. Thank my shot. Nineteen years. I don't know if anyone added up all of those years of service, but that's remarkable.
Two oh five.
Two oh five. And that's just the ones that are on those five-year increments. There's so many others, especially who have been, who showed out during the snow, that we're so grateful for all our employees and them staying with us for a long period of time. So, again, we say thank you. Now...
And now we have citizens' input.
Remember, three minutes? Name and address, and you need to sign in. So, if you wish to speak, give us your name and address, please.
Do I need to move this? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Jessica Limbert, and I live at eight zero two Franklin Avenue. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Six A, considering approval to temporarily dissolve or suspend the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I take issue with what seems to be an attempt to consolidate power within the City Council. Our democracy hinges on citizen input and the willingness of our elected officials to listen to the people and represent our best interests. This proposed resolution does the opposite of that and appears to be retaliatory in nature. For months, I've been coming to City Council meetings to witness how you conduct yourselves and the important decisions you make that impact me and my neighbors directly. For the past two months, this council has said yes to every agenda item except for the mayor's recommendation to appoint Mr. Fred Howard to the Rec Center Board. In November, I asked Councilman Burns why he didn't vote yes to appoint. His response was that he didn't like the process. In December, I asked Councilman Perka the same question, and his response was verbatim what Councilman Burns told me in November, that he didn't like the process. But he went on to state that if citizens would stop showing up in a way that he viewed as an attempt to intimidate or influence the outcome, he would vote to appoint Mr. Howard. He also referred to this steadfast group of citizens as "the other side," that is a quote. And when I asked him what he meant by "the other side," he said "the black community." We are held back by such mindsets. When our City Council works to consolidate power, that action is rooted in racism. Because racism and all forms of harm and oppression have never only been about hatred, it's also about power, who has it, who deserves it, and how those who have it can maintain it. And racism hurts us all. If the current three-person majority on this council wonders how much power you can hoard without consequence, the answer unfortunately may be so much that you continue to break trust in local government, throw wrenches in what should be the smooth operation of our city, and then seek to blame that on employees who are trying to, their hardest to make our city a great place to live, and spin your wheels while accomplishing very little on behalf of the people of Lewisburg. The desperate need for quality leadership, people who will show up without personal agenda, and on behalf of those that they are elected to serve with integrity, competence, and dedication is clear. So, tonight, I'm asking for two things. For members of this council to vote no on dissolving the Rec Center Advisory Board, but I'm also here on behalf of my fellow residents of Ward Three. We are submitting a formal letter to the City Council requesting the removal of Councilman David Perka from office in accordance with Section sixteen of the City Charter, which allows for such action in cases of misconduct, malfeasance, and other offenses showing unfitness for office. While I did not write this letter, I do support this letter and our collective request that the council review our concerns and set a time and place for a hearing to address these concerns. This request is not made lightly and doesn't reflect our personal views of Mr. Perka, but rather his conduct while on this council. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak, and we trust that the council will process our request with the seriousness and urgency it warrants. I have copies of the letter. I was going to hand them to you, Mr. Hutto, if that is okay. I don't know who to hand them to.
Matter of fact, I would like to respond quickly. What you stated, most of it is not true, and I know that I didn't use the black word or...
I wasn't talking about you. So, actually, that's what Mr. Perka said to me, Councilman Perka said to me in December.
I thought you said Burns.
I did. In November, I talked to you after the meeting. I said, "Why didn't you vote to appoint?" You said, "I don't like the process," and that's what I said tonight.
I think I said I didn't know the gentleman, but we're not going to get into that.
Okay.
You know, I think that's what I said.
Okay, let's move on, please. Anyone else?
I don't feel that three minutes is ample time to express what all I'd like to say tonight, but I have tried to condense it to some form. I'm Chad Woodward. Most of you guys know me personally, I guess, either on a business or a, or a personal level. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys, City Manager, Mayor Bingham, and the council for allowing me to speak tonight on a matter which is very near and dear to my heart. Those of you who may not know me, I'm Chad Woodward. I currently live on twelve seventy-two Webb Road. I own and operate two established businesses and own multiple properties here in town. I buy and buy your codes and I pay my fair share of taxes. I was born here and I plan on dying here, if it be God's will. I've operated Premier Paint for going on thirty, thirty years now, this year. As of this year, somewhere around eighty percent of my work is done right here in this community or in the surrounding towns or surrounded communities here in Marshall County. I feel I've got a pretty good grip on how, how your constituents feel, regardless of their religion, affiliation, the color of their skin. For years now, I've always kind of had a saying that I've often used, and it's served me well. Take care of Lewisburg, and Lewisburg will take care of you. I'm also the proud father of three beautiful daughters, Marla, Mallory, and Marissa, along with my loving wife of twenty-six years at us. My girls, alongside with me, have utilized the Parks and Rec to its fullest extent. And my two oldest have gone on to, to play collegiate ball as student athletes on athletic scholarships, and a lot of that will stem from our park systems here, here in town. My sister, Mia Smith, and I, we grew up at Jones Field, at the Kitty Park, and Southside Ballfields when we, when we weren't at Gordon's Florist or Red Top Deli with our parents working all the time. These parks are an integral part of our upbringing. We laugh, we cried, we played, we fell down, we got back up, we swang, and we swam. But, did you know, though, that there's children in this town that don't have anything else? They ain't got anybody. Ain't got nowhere else to go. They might not ever have another pool to swim in. It's a glorified babysitter of sorts, I guess, but some of those children never have a chance, you know, might not ever have a chance to play tennis or have a warm place to dribble a basketball. With diabetes on the rise, mortality rate climbing at younger ages, as well as crime on the rise, I feel these places are highly beneficial in the development of our youth and overall health and well-being in this community. For years, the Rec Center has been accused of being the bleeding of funds or the draining of our city's tax dollars. Whereas I see it as a tangible way to offer our citizens and see our tax dollars at work. For generations to come, our parks are something to be proud of and utilized by all of us. I've been a vendor in the city under the supervision of several different managers, and I've seen several mayors come and go. I've donated materials, labor, technical advice.
Please...
Even assisted in drawing up scopes of work for jobs a mayor may not have been awarded. I'm not in that bracket. I'd love to do more pro bono, but I'm not in a financial position to do that.
Would you conclude your remarks quickly, please? We're over the time limit.
Okay. Many of you may have knew my father, Leslie Woodward. Mayor Bob Phillips appointed him to the rec board in two thousand and one. He rarely, if ever, missed a meeting. Faithfully served for several years until his health would no longer allow it. I witnessed the highs and the lows many times. He would question, "Well, why we even had a rec board at all?" Because it seemed like what he presented either got shot down for whatever reasons, for lack of funds, or sometimes just lack of interest by the council in general, having anyone present. He was passionate about the Parks and Rec Division. These people were, were his extended family. He logged every mile that he walked, inside or out, usually twice a day. Number of sets of tennis he played. We could figure up his lifetime batting average from diaper league to the men's league and the church league. He was always on a schedule, worked seven days a week, and his time was precious and valuable to him. He did this to make a difference and leave something behind. He was a volunteer, and he was always terrified that the city was going to shut the whole place down at times. I must have loved arguing with him, because I'd say, "Well, Dad, nothing up there generates any money other than the golf course." And he was quick to reply, "Well, son, it's not intended to make money. It's never been." As far as citizens to have something to be proud of, be utilized.
Again, I remind you, you're well over your limits, so...
Thank you, sir.
Please conclude.
All right. I've thought about that a lot lately, especially now that I'm getting older. And I also remember my father alongside with Mickey King, Spook Clark, Charlie Tillman went before the council to request new softball fields. Spook wanted his little girls to have their own place to play, practice. And it just so happened, city owns some land out on Old Airport Road in a flood plain where most of our ball fields reside. The city accommodated them, much to their surprise, with enough land, not just for one, but for two, two fields. The league thrived. We boasted as many as ten to twelve teams and as many as six ladies teams at times. The city did have its reservations, but eventually granted their wish, mainly Spook's wish. But it came with a caveat. Outside of some of the fencing and light, it had to be self-sufficient, from grounds, crews, concessions, to umpires and upkeeps. So, these gentlemen set up a board, elected a president, and there were several throughout the years. I later became a member of that board at age seventeen, and the board, along with utilization of the skill set of our respective players in the league, along with donations from local businesses, helped keep it afloat with very, with very little burden to the city for many years.
Respectfully, please conclude your remarks.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Solomon. I live at thirteen thirty-nine Yale Road in Lewisburg. I was blessed to grow up in Lewisburg. I was graced eight years ago to move back to Lewisburg, and I want to thank you for your willingness to serve this city, but I also want to simultaneously rebuke you for the circus of self-interest and pettiness that you have allowed that service to become. A few months ago, I had sincerely hoped that the farcical and thankfully futile effort to fire our city manager was simply a momentary lapse in judgment by a previous council, but it is now abundantly clear to me that this present council, as currently supposed, seems intent on amplifying that mistake with another misstep that is even more pick-a-une, nearsighted, and tone-deaf. Our city is crumbling around us. Our people are, and if you don't believe that, come spend a week with me at Hope Town. And you are here duking it out over the appointment of a perfectly suitable candidate, so suitable that you...
So these gentlemen set up a board, elected a president, and there were several throughout the years. I later became a member of that board at age seventeen, and the board, along with utilization of the skill set of our respective players in the league, along with donations from local businesses, helped keep it afloat with very little burden to the city for many years.
Respectfully, please conclude your remarks.
My name is Frank Solomon. I live at 1339 Yale Road in Lewisburg. I was blessed to grow up in Lewisburg. I was graced eight years ago to move back to Lewisburg, and I want to thank you for your willingness to serve this city, but I also want to simultaneously rebuke you for the circus of self-interest and pettiness that you have allowed that service to become. A few months ago, I had sincerely hoped that the farcical and thankfully futile effort to fire our city manager was simply a momentary lapse in judgment by a previous council, but it is now abundantly clear to me that this present council, as currently supposed, seems intent on amplifying that mistake with another misstep that is even more pick-a-yun, nearsighted, and tone-deaf. Our city is crumbling around us. Our people are, and if you don't believe that, come spend a week with me at Hope Town, and you are here duking it out over the appointment of a perfectly suitable candidate, so suitable that you should have every single one of you said aye practically before Gina called the role, so that then you could spend more time discussing and doing something about the poverty and homelessness and drugs and disrepair that are infecting our present and poisoning our future. You know, many of us, many of us in small towns like Lewisburg, we like to talk about the waywardness of mayors in places like New York and Chicago and San Francisco, but right now, if we did that, that'd be a little, actually, that'd be a lot like the sink calling the bathtub wet. Seriously, if we can't even handle an appointment to an advisory board without a sad and by my appearance spiteful effort to dissolve that board, how are we going to ever handle the 5,000 new people that are going to move here in the next few years, along with all the economic and educational and environmental decisions and adaptations and sacrifices that we're going to have to make as a result? Seriously, how are we going to handle that if we can't handle this? I want to tell you, I love Lewisburg. My parents were never really in my life, so I had to have lots of people fill in the gaps in my life, and they were the people of this city. This city and its people rescued me from ruin, and I will always be thankful for that, and it's still doing that for me every day I'm here through our work at Hope Town. I'm telling you, I need this city and I need you. I'm not too proud to tell you, I need you, and I can tell you that thousands of other hurting people, many of them in far worse circumstances than I ever was, they need you too. They need this city to be a vibrant, unified, forward-thinking, forward-moving city to call home. So Mr. Perka, Mr. Crutcher, Ms. Michael, Mr. Hazlipp, Mr. Bingham, Mr. Burns, Ms. Thomas, I simply want to say to you that we can do better. You can do better. Enough with the one-upsmanship. Stop the silly tit-for-tat. Forgive whatever grievances you have. Crucify your personal agendas, and most of all, seek out the meekness and self-control and faithfulness that is at the center of the faith that practically every single person in this room claims. And know this, if you don't do that, the people of this city will find, endorse, and elect someone else. Thank you.
My name is Patty Parsons, 351 Creekside Drive, Lewisburg, Tennessee. Let me get my glasses on. When I served on the city council, I really tried to do the right thing and listen to the people who elected me to represent them. While on this council, there was a need to form a recreation board, so in 2022, as we discussed, informed the board. So yes, I have a deep interest in this board and for it to be a success. The purpose of the board was to listen to any complaints and input from citizens that had about any other things in any of the twelve parks that Lewisburg has to offer you. The board helped to achieve several things, such as a new pavilion, the expiration station was refurbished by private industry, which did not cost the taxpayers nothing. They also had volunteers to come help solve problems with the heaters in the pool that kept going out. They helped fix the problems without costing the taxpayers nothing at all for that advice and their recommendations. I personally have had several people in the community tell me that when things were wrong, they would say they could come and talk to us, and they weren't comfortable talking to a city council person. They could go to the board, they could go to Kerry. You know, it's just, you run into them at Walmart, and they'd say, "Hey, did you know this?" And if I didn't know it, I would bring it to the attention. The Recreation Board is a volunteer board without no pay, so that people who serve on this board want to make a difference in the community and for the citizens and voice their opinions and to listen to the suggestions. The board is here to advocate for the citizens. I have so many people to thank me for helping the board find solutions and knowing someone is listening to them. And ever since the board started in 2022, I know the revenue has increased at least $100,000 by the increase in the golf fees and the other things that the board recommended. So yes, it is a viable organ for it to function. Thank you.
Did Frank sign on?
I'm Carol Yancy from 3188 O'Colombia Road, and I also want to speak about the dissolving of this board. I am at the REC Center six days a week. In this city, it is the biggest secret out there. Our community is not aware of all the things that it provides for us, and us that go try to advertise it to other people. But to resolve and not have this board, to me, would be the biggest mistake ever. I, like I said, I'm just somebody that goes and participates, but one of the meetings that I did go to in the beginning, I know they were very surprised at how many people showed up to talk about different situations. I'm sure you would rather them talk to that board than come in here and talk to you every time that you have a meeting. One of the things that I was amazed, and I do not know, Patty could probably tell you how it worked out, because Patty was there the day that it was said, but one man was so interested in having an outdoor pickle court that he was willing to take that and build it and do that without any money from this city. Now, that was a man going to a board. We can't all be in here all the time. You don't want to hear us. This board is not paid. This board cares about the Recreation Center. This board, our people, that are there, they are either working in the gym or working in different areas, and every area is represented, and I think it would be very bad for us to see this board dissolved. Thank you.
Do you need to sign in, ma'am? You need to sign?
Sign.
Have you signed in?
She already signed.
All right.
Hello, my name is Troy Whitesel. I'm 1510 Timber Hill Drive, and I'm going to speak on the Recreation Board and talking about the processes, okay? So I'm trying to understand these processes of our city council, okay? So we have a highly person that fits the bill for this job, or not a job, but for this voluntary position on a board, and normally, we should have our arms open wide and say, "Thank you for volunteering your time as a non-paid person to give us your services." And Mr. Howard, I'll speak that I think he's clearly qualified for this position, and I want to understand why he's not qualified, okay? So the second thing is, is I see this first pitch, and it's, "Okay, we don't want Freddie Howard on the board." All right, then a month later, we want to dissolve the board. What's the third step here? What's going on? Because I'm a citizen of Lewisburg, and I'm up to here with it, and I think most of the people are behind me as a citizen. So I'm asking the city council members, is it, the people voted you to represent their district? You are the people's voice for your district, and is this what your people of your district want? I want to know this. Are they behind me, telling me that, "Yes, we want to dissolve this board, Troy"? They're not back there, and I'm not going to turn around because I'm not supposed to, but I know. And so I'm asking, is it the people, Mr. Perka, in your district that want to dissolve this board? Mr. Crutcher, is it yours? Ms. Michael, is it yours? Mr. Burns, is it yours? Ms. Thomas? I need to know. Or is it a personal agenda, or is it the people of your district that want this? Hey, if it's the people of your district, then the people need to speak up, and they need to be here, and they're not. So I just see a personal agenda, and I am a citizen that loves my town, and I respect my town, and I just think that what I see is chaos, and I see that there's no working. There's no working. It's all about me or I or what my agenda is. So, and if you feel like I'm talking to you, I am talking to you, okay? If you're on this board and you feel like I'm talking to you, hear me.
Robert Webb, 930 Walnut Street, and I'm here in continuation for a friend of mine. When we go over expenditures of our budgets, our homes, works of business, we do have to realize that there are things that we want and things that we need. Sometimes we just can't simply afford it. Our community wants and needs the parks and recreation. We want to see it flourish regardless of whose guidance it's under. My personal opinion, along with many others, can assist you with that. I also understand that sometimes tough decisions have to be made. Beginning and end, this is not one of them. It's a no-lose situation and a no-brainer. We owe it to our children, our grandchildren, and the people who voted for you and the people like Leslie Woodward who dedicated his life to the REC Center. I'm going to let you in on a little secret, how they were successful. One word, volunteers. I can give you one good reason why, tell me why you'd even consider doing away with this REC board. It doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. It doesn't cause any problems, to my knowledge. I understand that this council has some tough decisions to make at times, but this isn't one of them. Everyone on this panel, I feel, has seen tangible positive changes with this REC board assisting the council throughout the years, so why tarnish its legacy? All I ask at this point is you be transparent with your constituents and your community with the decision you make tonight. Our farmland due to progress is being morphed into dense housing and vacant lots, affordable housing and businesses. There's no turning back at this point, and I think we can agree on that. But at some point, our green spaces, which may be seen as a burden along with our parks, are all we have left. I hope that you understand that we need to start being more proactive than reactive. How about the next time someone spearheads a cleanup at New Lake, Jones Park, Goat Park, or the South Side Fields? I'd like to challenge you to volunteer your time. Maybe some gloves, garbage bags, or just a big thank you on social media to those that take part. Time is our biggest commodity. We have places all over town offering to pay for good help and can't find them. Hope Town is a beacon of light to many in our community, offering goods and services at no charge, ministering our youth, helping provide for our ever-growing homeless population. You may ask us, "How do they do that? How do they help so many people?" Volunteers. Here's another instance. The Moore'swood Community, they have a fire hall. They have operating capital, equipment, fire trucks, gear, but they cannot be registered as a fire hall. People may lose their homes and watch insurance premiums skyrocket while I might ask. They got everything they need. Nope. What do they like? Volunteers. I'm far from a UT fan, but our state school and state in general is labeled as the volunteer state. Am I not right? Am I missing something here? We have a very long history of military service and its contributions of its citizens to the armed forces. In the War of 1812, we sent 2,000 soldiers to fight in the Battle of New Orleans under Andrew Jackson. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble saying, I ain't got my glasses. For anyone that thinks volunteers have no importance, I wholeheartedly and respectfully disagree. How discouraging this must be to our current board members, including people like Matt Monix, whom I know personally and admire as a person and as an executive. He has planted countless numbers of trees and proved green spaces, actually planted several trees on our golf course and in our parks. He also played a pivotal key role in getting our amphitheater donated at the Goat Park. Or Freddie Howard, who has touched lives in a positive manner, or so many of our youth, coaching many of them in basketball, football, baseball, and life lessons. Kerry and Savage Tibble helped introduce some pickleball to people interested in learning how to play. I wouldn't deter help with so many people in our, so many youth with the fundamentals of basketball. And sorry, Councilman Thomas, I don't guess we've personally met. I'm not familiar with their attributes, for that, I apologize. However, I'm sure that you have a good heart, and you may be accepted, right place to accept a non-paying position on the REC board. I would hate to see us tarnish these achievements and accolades celebrated by these individuals and the many that came before them.
Please conclude your remarks.
Yeah, I will, just in a second, sir. About done. I have seen the celebration of various greenways, walking trails, vision plans, along with many other pilots, whereas I've also heard the frustrations of not getting skate parks, grant money being reallocated, there was the go-for splash pads at the Kitty Park and Jones Field. I really like to ask you to try to think about what you're voting on and who would affect. I personally know most of the past and present volunteers. I'd like to thank this opportunity to come in and thank each and every one of you for the positive impacts. Thank you. Sorry about that. I gotta get a drink.
I should have gone first. So my name is Matt Mullenix, 334 Oakwood Drive, and of course, I'm here to speak on the REC board dissolution. I am a city member of the REC board, and I guess I'd like to begin by thanking the mayor, the city council for giving me the opportunity. It's a great honor to be able to give my time to such a wonderful part of the Lewisburg community and in our governmental community. Over the past two years, we've worked with KRE and the rest of the REC board team to bring things to the city council, and I think we've accomplished many activities that the council wanted us to perform. We've increased revenue by 50%. We have, which has brought Lewisburg to benchmark levels as compared to other cities, which benchmarking is a fantastic tool to utilize to see where you stand against other cities. We've helped to modernize the facilities, and we've worked with the community to meet the changing needs of growing Lewisburg. Regarding this current proposal to abolish the board, I would like to express the following personal opinion, not as representative of the board, to say, if this board was being abolished as part of some city municipal activity in which all the boards were being evaluated, taking a look at the effectiveness of the boards, and considering actually adding new boards, and in that activity, there was a decision made that the board, the REC board, would need to be abolished. It was not serving the needs of the community or the needs of the council. Of course, I would be disappointed. However, this is not the case. Under the current circumstances and without any stated justification, I mean, come on, y'all. The community expects more than that. This appears at best short-sighted and reactionary, and at worst vindictive and targeted. Now, I'm sure, I've worked with the city for many, many years, I'm sure the city council is not going down this path with any untoward motivation. But the lack of transparency invites speculation and undermines the trust of the community in the city council, and that's not what we are trying to accomplish as a community. In closing, I would like to encourage the council to take more time to consider this, seek community input. There were some comments about each of the council members going and listening to what the constituents are saying. And if there is a problem with the board, I would ask, please bring some clear direction and feedback and set clear expectations. Thank you very much.
I got one more. This was a lady that could not be here, and I verified with Mr. Hutto that it was okay for me to read it for her. She emailed it to me, asked me would I read it. Is it okay if I sit here? I really don't feel like walking down there. Thank you. This is, her husband is active military. They're in Mississippi. She couldn't be home right now. Her name is Mia Smith. I'll sign the sheet in a minute. Mia Smith, 537 Forest Street. This evening, I am addressing the council not only as a concerned citizen, but also on behalf of my late father, Leslie Woodward, who served as the former chairman of the REC Board Committee. Dad was appointed to the board in 2001 and served until 2021. However, this affiliation dates far However, this affiliation dates far back to the mid 70s. I recently found a news article from 1979 where he was encouraging citizens to volunteer their time with construction of the courts and reminding them to thank this wonderful city for all their contributions and improvements. He's been gone for almost a year now, and my, how the tables have turned. I can hardly fathom that dissolving a band of, a board of volunteers is even an agenda item. I'd be remiss if I did not act as his voice and speak out against the futile nature of this proposed travesty. I read an article recently titled Beware of Bait and Switch Politicians, and the similarities here are uncanny. I listened objectively last week and still struggling to find relevance and reason. Using big numbers like 1.3 million deficit was a nice distraction, yet completely irrelevant. The rec center facing significant maintenance and budgetary issues that surpassed the capabilities of the board was the opening rationale. Bingo. Perhaps it surpasses their capabilities because both ongoing and known issues are out of scope of their unpaid jobs. Per original documentation when the board was assembled, this is an advisory board to the Lewisburg City Council, focuses on community recreational activities. Is there a job description with specific expectations of the board? If no, perhaps that should be what is on the non-hidden agenda. Invisible expectations will never be met. To the council, a sincere thank you to those who continue to speak up and speak out, advocating for the betterment of our city. To the rest of y'all, shame on you for the audacity, unacceptable conduct, and flagrant disrespect towards our mayor and fellow councilmen. Every grade school club meeting I have ever attended was far more professional than this circus, including the elementary ones. Please help the citizens understand specifically how dissolving a board that costs the city $0 will help anything. Make it make sense. To the citizens, look around, listen, and take note of how to vote. We put these elected officials here. What is the hidden agenda? What is really going on here? What's next? Where does it end? Blaming the rec board for the pre-existing deficit is worse than firing the waitress staff because the cooks make terrible food. To the rec board members, I'm going to give you the deserved apology you likely will never get elsewhere. I am so very sorry that this fascist agenda is besmirching the work you have done. Your work and contributions have not gone unnoticed. It is important, and your time and input are invaluable and appreciated. I'll close with the words from my dad's obituary that he kept posted on his wall. The most valuable gift you can give someone is your time. Thank you for yours. Good evening, and may everyone have the day and life they deserve. Again, that was from Ms. Mia Smith, 537 Forest Street. I don't want anyone to get it mixed up and say that was the old city manager's words because I'm often misquoted and misrepresented it, but it was from an email sent to me to be read. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else? Let's move on, the next item, Mr. Minutes.
Item three, approval of the minutes.
You have the minutes before you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher. Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Councilman Perka. Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you, you have before you, uh...
Item four, approval of bills and financial statements.
You have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Crutcher seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Number five, O Business, consider approval of second and final reading of ordinance 2417 or ordinance to amend the storm water ordinance regarding meeting the requirements to issue a land disturbance permit.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Perk, uh, Michael makes the motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Councilman Perka seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Uh, item five, B, consider approval of second and final reading of ordinance 2418 or ordinance to approve Lewisburg Water and Wastewater Rate Adjustments for Water and Sewer.
Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, number C, consider approval of second and final reading of ordinance 2419 or ordinance to approve owner requests for rezoning property located at 1123, 1125, 1127, 1129, 1131, and 1133 Fifth Avenue North, approximately 0.15, 0.10, 0.10, 0.11, 0.11, 0.17 acres more or less, tax map 064A, group C, parcel 077.00, 078.00, 079.00, 080.00, 081.00, and 082.00 from R3 High Density Residential to C2 Intermediate Business, favorable recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission vote six to zero on November 19th, 2024 meeting, owner Pam Allen and John Roberts.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Councilman Crutcher seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, D, consider approval of second and final reading of Annexation Resolution 24-20, an annexation resolution to approve owner requests for annexation and zone to C2 Intermediate Business, approximately 34.47 acres located on unaddressed Globe Road, map 062, parcel 112.00 into the corporal city limits of the city of Lewisburg Ward 5, favorable recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, vote six to zero on November 19th, 2024 meeting, owner Hill Hawkins and Catherine Hawkins.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, E, consider approval of Resolution 2437, a resolution to approve owner request of plan of service for the annexation of the property unaddressed Globe Road, map 062, parcel 112.00, and book 884, page 408, favorable recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, vote on November 19th, 2024 meeting, owner Hill and Catherine Hawkins.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Councilwoman Thomas to approve, it's a second, uh, Councilman Perka. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
New Business. Six, item A, consider approval of first reading of ordinance 25-01 and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance for the city of Lewisburg, Article BII, Section 7.090, and Article V, Section 5.040.
Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Michael?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Perka.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Item six, B, consider approval of Resolution 24-01, a resolution to dissolve and suspend the City of Lewisburg Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Before we consider that, Mr. Hutto, would you like to... You've done some research on this, tell us about that.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. The, um, Parks and Recreation Board was created by a resolution, and then it established its own bylaws, which were later both approved by its newly formed board and then the city council. A city has, uh, the authority under the Tennessee Code to operate Parks and Recreation's facilities, uh, and then operate them and maintain them and, um, have programming for its citizens. And the TCA Code, uh, 1124103 sets out three ways that a city can do this, and it must choose one of them. Uh, the first is for a city council to retain the authority, uh, to manage the Parks and Recreation facilities, but it can delegate some of that authority or to an advisory board, and it has to do so by an ordinance. Uh, the other, another way is to essentially delegate almost all of the authority of the city, uh, council to a advisory board or committee, to operate the Parks and Recreation Department, subject to whatever bylaws and, uh, and authority that it's given, uh, in that delegation. So, it does not, you know, the city, the council can't delegate spending authority. They can't delegate, uh, the authority for the board to purchase and buy things. That still falls under the director and the city council's job to approve monetary expenditures. But as far as programming, um, general direction of the Parks and Recreation Board or Parks and Recreation Facilities, acquisition plans, uh, long-term plans, that is what is generally delegated to those boards. And then, um, the third way is the same as the second way, except it's for, if there's a joint, Parks and Recreation Facility, if there's a city and county board, or if two cities had joint Parks and Recreation Facilities, they shared if they were close by. So, uh, it appears that Lewisburg, by having a resolution, delegated its authority to the board, and so it, it could suspend it, but then the city council would be, uh, responsible for all the duties that the Parks and Recreation Board was, um, is currently handling, like dealing with citizen complaints or issues, and it would probably necessitate either a separate meeting, um, for that purpose or adding all those things into the agenda here, uh, once a month. And, um, if, if the board were dissolved, and then, uh, the other thing, one of the, uh, TCA statutes on Parks and Recreation Departments for municipality says is that, you know, once you've got one, you've got a, uh, city has a duty to, uh, maintain that, those facilities and, uh, that department and budget for it and, and support it and run it. So that is a duty that the city council has, uh, that is ongoing as long as there's a Parks Department. Is there, uh, you happy to answer any questions, or?
Is it legal to do this, in your opinion? To dissolve it?
The, the council could choose to dissolve, but they'd simply have to start taking over and, uh, performing all the duties that the current advisory board is, uh, and Parks Committee is, is handling.
Let's, Carrie, I want you to say something too, you have some information.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Um, I would like to take a few minutes to respectfully address the city council in regards to the Department of Parks and Recreation as a whole, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and any misconceptions that the council or community members may have. The primary purpose for Parks and Recreation Departments in municipalities is to enhance the quality of life for residents by providing accessible, safe, and well-maintained spaces and opportunities for leisure, recreation, and community engagement. Core functions of the department include providing recreation opportunities by offering diverse recreational programs and promoted, promoting active lifestyles to improve public health and well-being, preserving and enhancing green spaces by maintaining parks and greenways, and supporting environmental conservation and sustainability efforts, supporting community building by creating spaces, events, and activities that foster social interaction, inclusivity, and community pride, and by boosting local economy and tourism through sports tournaments, attractions, and enhancing property values and making our community more desirable. So I did a little research on how many parks, rural parks and recreation departments actually make a profit. According to the 2022 National Recreation Parks and Association Agency Performance Review, the typical park and recreation agency recovers 23.6% of its operating expenditures from non-tax revenues. Smaller agencies who serve populations of 20,000 or fewer generate approximately $34 in revenue per resident annually. So I went to the State of Tennessee Comptroller of Treasury website to see exactly how we, the City of Lewisburg Parks and Recreation Department, compare to surrounding cities and cities our size. So the 2020 census shows Lewisburg at a population of 12,288 people. Our 20, uh, 2024 operating budget is approximately $1.6 million. The revenue that was generated through our Parks and Recreation Department was $567,000. We recovered 35% of our operating budget, which is well above the national average. Pulaski, their population is 8,397. Their 2023 operating budget was 1.2 million. They generated $56,500 in revenue for a total of 5% recovered. Fayetteville, population 7,068. Their operating budget was 732,000. They generated $59,920 in revenue, which is 8% recovered. Manchester, population 12,212. Their operating budget was $2.96 million. They generated $974,531 in revenue, which recovered 33% of their operating budget. Shelbyville, population 23,557, 2.8 million operating budget, generated $369,807 in revenue, which is 13% of their operating budget that they recovered. Murfreesboro, 165,000. Murfreesboro, a hundred and sixty-five thousand plus, twenty-four million operating budget. They generated five point seven seven million in revenue, which is twenty-four percent recovered. And then Columbia, forty-one thousand six hundred ninety population, a three point eight million dollar operating budget, generated eighty-three thousand ninety dollars in revenue for a two percent recovery. A strong, a strong Parks and Recreation System directly correlates with economic development by enhancing quality of life, attracting businesses and residents, increasing property values, and fostering tourism. Studies show that cities with strong Parks and Recreation Systems consistently report high-term levels of economic growth and community satisfaction. Now with a strong Parks and Recreation System comes a strong Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board provides valuable guidance, advocacy, and community representation. Benefits of a strong board include, one, community representation. It ensures that diverse communities and group interests and needs are represented in decision-making. It provides a platform for residents to voice concerns, suggest improvements, and participate in shaping recreation services. Two, expert advice and guidance. It helps the department align programs and policies with best practices and emerging, emerging trends. For example, the price study from the Rec Board on increasing golf and facility rates that has led to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase in revenue over the last eighteen months. Number three, they provide advocacy and support. Members advocate for Parks and Recreation funding policies and initiative at the municipal level. They strengthen community support for Parks and Recreation projects, helping to secure grants or donations voluntarily. And this is also where we need for a strong councilman representation to come into play. Strategic planning and oversight. A strong Parks and Rec Board provides input on long-term planning such as park development, program expansions, and environmental stewardship. These volunteers assist in evaluating existing facilities and services. They ensure that the community's needs are met. Increased transparency and accountability. They ensure public oversight of decisions regarding park usage and programs. Development, prime example of these, the last two master plans that we're trying to update. This plan is needed to apply for TDEC grants. The state will not accept any application if you don't have an updated master plan. Community engagement and partnerships. These volunteers help foster partnerships with local organizations, businesses, to enhance different offerings. For example, prior to Morelli purchasing CKNA, they donated over a hundred thousand dollars to Rock Creek Park to help get that facility up to par. Teledyne, they, they donated the playground across from the library at Rock Creek Park. Talos, they help with, with the heating situations of our indoor pool. They have helped with the refurbishment of the exploration station. They have assisted with the building of the new pavilion that we have at the Rec Center. D.R. Horton, Walker Diecasting, Hope Town, and other civic organizations such as Rotary and the Lewisburg Elks Lodge. Even though we are not directly profitable, our department contributes to local economies by attracting tourism, supporting local businesses, improving our quality of lives, and enhancing our property values. Thank you.
Mr. Hutto, I have another question for you.
Certainly, Mayor.
If this was to pass, this resolution is to dissolve the Community Development Board. So what takes, what takes its place?
The city council would have to take its place, Mayor.
So they would have, we would have to have meetings here, and each member of the council would be the board?
That's how the statute directs it, that they're, the council would perform those duties and create the plans to maintain the facilities, operate programs, acquire new facilities or update them. That'd be their responsibility, whereas now the, I believe the Rec Board does the majority of those things, as Ms. White said, and, and the council's has to find funding for it, I guess, other than what the Rec Center takes in.
Okay, any more comments before we call for?
Can I, I want to say something, do I wait until after the motion for discussion?
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? No motion, it fails. Next item?
Seven, under Other Business, City Managers' Report.
Yes, I have something under Other Business. Councilman Thomas, you also sit on the Water Board. I believe the Water Department also has a aging facility in great need of repairs and updating. They also have a large debt balance, owner balance sheet in the name of the City of Lewisburg. They have a board who does not bring us any recommendations for efficient business or increase of revenues. In fact, they just hired an outs, and spent money to hire an outside consulting firm to review their rates, and that firm recommended that they increase their rates just to cover the production of water. Do we expect in the near future for you to bring a proposal to dissolve the Water Board?
Any other discussion?
Okay, now City Managers' Report.
Ma'am, your report, please.
Yes, sir. I can't count the number of phone calls, emails, and personal visits I've gotten from citizens throughout the community commending our police department for their actions during last week's warming centers at the McKnight Center for people that needed to get out of cold weather, or people that didn't have adequate heat in their homes. They were highly complimentary of how many times our police officers came through the building, walked through, made sure everything was okay, but they didn't just walk through the building, how they interacted with the folks that were in the building, in the warming shelter, the people that we, I don't like to call them homeless, because that's a stigma. I call them temporary displaced individuals who don't have a permanent residence, but we don't just count them off. It's nice to know that our police officers do engage with them, and they have personal relationships with some of them. So people are just fascinated by how many times the officers, officers came through, checked out the situation, and actually engaged with the people. So I commend you guys. I'm going down.
Well, I want the Baptist to have credit.
That was, that was just for a few days, and then it was changed to Greater First Baptist Church, and the same thing went on. They also visited that place and frequented it, doing the same thing. So that's just the caliber of individuals we have employed with the City of Lewisburg. And while we're talking about that, we got another code spell coming up. So the emergency management has already put out the information. The warming center will be open at McKnight Center tonight and tomorrow night, because temperatures are supposed to dip below freezing. The, the center will not be open Thursday the sixteenth through Saturday eighteenth, because temperatures are to rise above freezing. The McKnight Center will be open again Sunday night, November, January nineteenth, and Monday night, and Tuesday night. Those are sub-freezing temperatures again, so they're going to be open again. So we need to get that word out there, okay? Thank you, guys. Also had compliments from our Public Works Department about the way they handled our weather events. They did a great job this year, and I know because I was out there with them for about seven hours on Friday. And not taking away from what they did this year, but last year was much more challenging than this year, because last year we had already had multiple days of sub-freezing temperatures. We had moisture on the ground, which created a layer of ice, and then it snowed on top of that. So we were in real bad shape last year, and even though it didn't look as pretty and clean as quickly as it did this time, they did twice as much work last year getting it, because the guys didn't even get to go home. They spent the nights down there at that shop, rotating, and coming in and resting and eating, sending another shift out. And I say all that just to say, that's the caliber of work that these folks do, and it's not just during weather events. They put the same effort into their work every single day, and a lot of it goes unnoticed, but they take pride in what they do. So nobody had to light a fire on them, that's the caliber of work that we do. And even in the weather events, the police and the fire department are always on standby to do whatever they can. And like I said, last year when they did it, people were cooking for them, taking food down there, because these guys were away from their families while we were sitting at home in the warmth, enjoying it. But that's what we have, working for the City of Lewisburg. That's the character of our employees, that's the character of our city as a whole, and we have all got to do better. It, it, it makes no sense where we are, okay? This is a team sport, not an individual sport. Everybody plays a role on the team. Quarterback can't take the hike, throw the ball downfield and run and catch it, he's got to have a receiver. This is a team sport, and everybody at this table and employed by the city can bring something to that team, and nobody is going to get everything they want. But we can't get caught up in a tug-of-war, personal battles, struggles for authority or whatever, because the moment we do that, the taxpaying citizens are not getting what they deserve, and it's a bad look for everybody. It's 2025, the year has just began, we can do a whole lot better and have a brighter future for the City of Lewisburg, for everybody. We all can do better, not just one of us, not two of us, we all can do better, because it takes us all. The City of Lewisburg is not the city council, it's not administration, it's not every department director, it's all of us, it's the citizens and all of us, working together as one, striving for a common goal. You cannot reach a common goal with personal agendas. We all took the same oath, I believe, we put our hands on a Bible, and we swore to God, and I know I'm not supposed to talk about God, but we talk about every other ungodly thing in the world, so we're going to talk a little bit about God tonight. We swear to God that we will demean ourselves for what's in the best interest of the City of Lewisburg. Let's make sure we all do that, and, and the sky's the limit for this place. What we're showing is not the Lewisburg that I was born in, not the Lewisburg I was raised in, and like the other fellow said, the Lewisburg I'm going to die in. Already got my head stoned, Beechwood Cemetery in Corinth. Let's make this city what we know it is. That is the attraction. We're not lucky and fortunate that people have come to this area, they like what they see here. Let's not show them anything different, okay? That's all of that. Now, let's see, got Public Works and all that. Throughout the year, we had a lot of accidents that destroyed city property. We have an insurance carrier called PEP, Public Entity Partners, and you all know, if you file a bunch of insurance claims, when it's time for renewal, you know what happens. So, so I want to commend our city recorder on taking the lead on doing some of this, filing reports, getting in touch with the individuals who damaged our property and all that, and not having the insurance carriers do the claim filing and all that. And throughout 2024, we collected fourteen thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and eight cents without using our insurance carriers for that, which would have been an instant increase in our premiums when we go to renew. So that's going above and beyond to, to save the city money, and if you, like me, every little bit helps. Fourteen thousand might not seem like a lot, but I guarantee you saving twice that much on insurance premiums, because we got a lot of stuff insured, so good job on that. Also, what I plan on starting to do at this meeting, when I give my report, I'm going to have city recorder give an update on vacancies on our board. This is one way we all know at the same time where there's a vacancy on a board. So I don't think we just have one right now, but can you tell us where the board vacancy is?
On the, the cemetery board, Ms. Foster was on our board, and Ms. Foster has passed away, so that's a vacancy coming up.
That's all I got.
Questions?
Questions, thank you.
We're going to ask, since you touched on the Public Works snow removal, I'm going to ask Brandon to come first, he has devised a very sophisticated plan. So, Brandon, you're here, I know.
I really don't have anything for y'all, if y'all got something for me.
Yes, I want you to explain, first, we want to congratulate you again on a job well done by you and your staff, but tell us a little bit about the plan that you've come up with, this divided the city into war, to dis-
Quadrants.
Quadrant.
Yes, sir. It wasn't only my plan, I can't take full credit for it. Me, my assistant, and several other employees down there, we got together and asked ourselves, what can we do to make this better? How can we do it, make it more faster, save money in the process? So we developed a map of the city and divided into four quadrants, and assigned crews to each one of them. That way, we, we could keep up with cost of materials going out, such as salt, brine, and equipment cost, and also be more prompt on time to clear the streets as well. And that's one of the things that me, and Teddy, and several others down there come up with. That was the biggest difference we've seen this year, is, is not only we were able to do it in a timely fashion, we used less material by doing it.
I think the skid loaders were one of the most effective tools, is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir. We rented three skid loaders for this job, that gave us four total, because we already have one. So basically, there was four skid loaders, a backhoe, and three salt trucks out that night.
You have anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Questions? Again, job well done, and we thank, not only-
Thank you.
You're welcome, y'all. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Perka wanted to say something.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Perka?
Oh.
I did want to thank Mr. Brandon. I was one of the people that emailed Bam to thank him for the hard work that the gentleman did, and I just want to thank Brandon for his hard work, and I much appreciate it, and the citizens of Lewisburg do too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, tell.
I, I want this properly titled, but I want the the Director of Economic and Community Development, Jennifer- Development, Jennifer Pearson, who we overlooked last time. Would you come?
Nobody puts baby in the closet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for remembering me this time and remembering what it is I do. I appreciate it. Just quickly, I know we have taken up a lot of time today for citizen comment. So a couple of industry updates. We have a new industry that is looking at an existing building in the industrial park. City and utility officials are going to meet with them on January 22nd. Some of us have already met with them a few times to discuss their needs and our ability to meet them. They've already talked to. The most important utility that we all know is water, and Trig has said what they need is, is okay. This is a competitive bid for an industry as they're looking at three area sites, one here and two others out of county. Went to meet with Berry Plastics last week. They're being, they're being purchased by a larger company called Amcor, which is an international packaging solutions company. Acquisition is supposed to be finalized by mid-2025. This is a good thing for them because it's expanding their business, and because of that, they are looking to expand to a twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, blah, 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 200,000 square foot building, over 200,000 square feet due to their expansion of their business. I think all of y'all who are familiar with what we have around town, we don't have a, a ready building for them right now, but we're working with some landowners, building owners, to see what we might have available for them. And then, as was brought up at the work session, Project Paint, we're going to talk about that at the IDB meeting as Councilman Burns suggested so that we can understand IDB's options where that's concerned. Couple of things with Main Street, which also the Director of Economic Development is in charge of for the city. We've done, for a couple of years, downtown improvement grants, which are paid for by Main Street USA. We're going to reopen that in a couple of months. These are grants that help improve the facades of downtown businesses. If y'all aren't familiar with this and want to take a look at some of them, Davis Law Firm has done this to improve their building. The Chamber of Commerce has done this to improve their building, and the old Rose Dance School next to Waxo, I'm unsure as to what to call that building, the Dancies Building, anyway, they took advantage of that, and we already have folks that are asking us about the new grants. So this is a great improvement to downtown, it helps us, beautify our downtown, it helps businesses to want to move in, and it's something that will continue. That's about all I've got. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you. I'll go back in the closet now.
Alan?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of items to bring to your attention. The first one actually has to do with the financial report that was reviewed earlier in the agenda, and I just wanted to know a couple of items regarding that report. I actually had a conversation with Councilwoman Michael early this morning, and she very stuteously brought to my attention, at the date of this report, which was November 30th, when you look at the percentage of the budget that was expended, there are a couple of departments that are a little bit above the benchmark, which at that time would be about 42%, and that would be the fire department and airport. And I explained that that was due to large capital purchases, expenditures that had been made as of that date, where the budget had not been appropriated yet because these monies basically are due to ARPA funds. The money is there, it's been approved for the use of these expenditures, but what we have to do is a budget amendment to appropriate the money and reflect it in the budget itself. So that led to the observation that Councilwoman Michael brought to my attention. So we talked about it, and she had a great idea, I thought, was to break out capital expenditures on this report from operating expenditures, so I plan on doing that starting next month, so you'll see a little change in the format of this report. So again, I thought that was a great suggestion on the part of Councilwoman Michael. Other than that, regarding budget, I am working on budget worksheets for next fiscal year already, hope to have these worksheets out to the departments within the next couple of weeks, and other than that, just continuing to provide information, some more requests from auditor as of today, actually, so that's still a work in process. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Yes, how about our sales tax revenues? Are they on track?
Yes, sir, they are on track, both the local sales tax and the state sales tax are both on track with our budget projections, about, they're each about $2.4 to $2 million each, so it's around $200,000 per month that we've been realizing from, from those two revenue sources.
Are they growing a little beyond expectations or staying pretty?
It's pretty early in the year to tell, but right now, they seem to be on track with expectations for this current year.
What about property tax collections?
Property taxes, with the recent re, collection and distribution from CoreLogic, which was almost a million dollars, I think it was a little over $900,000. I hate to, in a public, mean, give exact percentages, but I think we're about 50%, almost 60% collected on our budget as of the most recent, and I'll update council on my cash sheet when I send that out this, this Friday, but I think we're a little, a little over 50% collected on our total property taxes that were budgeted, about 5.2 million, so I think we're a little over 2.6 million collected as of that most recent receipt that we received.
Next month is the big, is the big.
Should be, yeah, yeah, that'll be the big, the big one, yeah.
Questions for Alan? Appreciate what you do, Alan, you and Debbie. Oh, let's see. Is it?
He is, he's out in the lobby. Getting from him.
Yeah, y'all know you have something to report.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. As I'm sure y'all know, we have been very busy since November. We're hoping that slows down. However, I do want to touch on the topic again of Brandon and his folks. I usually get out and ride the streets during storms like that to check when you put no chains on our trucks, you know, driving 50, 60,000 pound vehicles uphill, stuck down with ice on them, doesn't go very well. We did not have to do that this year. Thank goodness, that is a pain, and my firemen hate it, and I'll hear the end of it. Just the numbers for 2024, we run a total of 1,763 calls, 625 fire-related, and 1,138 medical-related. We logged 9,265 hours of training, and we had completed 488 fire and life safety inspections. I want to thank Inspector Mike Baron, every one of those inspections, he done. He's planning a little catch-up after COVID, still, but we were able to, I don't like to call them violations, but we were to have some educational situations with, with businesses on why we enforce what we do to the safety of the public and businesses and our firefighters. Good news on, I heard Alan talk about the, the budget, one of our capital expenditures, the squad truck, I told you it was in Columbia, it's actually in the shop now, I talked to him last week, it should come to us next week, which it will turn right around and go to the vinyl, the vinyl shop. So hopefully, we're hoping to have that truck in service mid-February. We've got some outfit to do and, and so much, some other things, but the engine is still in Kentucky, the body's being built. And then, we have four personnel that I like to recognize them when they do stuff like this, I'm not going to say their names just yet until, until they graduate, but they have enrolled themselves to advance their EMS career as basic EMTs and advanced EMTs. They do this in between all of our required training, and they do it on their own dime, on their own time, so I just like to recognize them, and hopefully, I'll be coming to you in a few months, saying that I have to graduate, but that's all I have as of right now.
Tell us a little bit more about the fire Walmart parking area in a truck.
So, so that was just, it was your standard vehicle fire for us. It was a pickup truck Dodge 5500. We weren't able to determine the cause of the fire, it's really hard to do that on vehicles, but everything went smoothly, I believe he had insurance, so.
Did he destroy it or just?
Yes, sir, it was a total loss.
And what's the status on the cabinet shop?
The cabinet shop is being worked by the Tennessee Grove Investigation at this time.
Okay, questions for Drew? Okay, chief, are you out in the hall as well there?
I was in the hall. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I will be quick, I know everybody's tired. For December of last year, we had 996 calls for service. There was, there were 20 new cases assigned to the investigation division. For the year 2024, there was, we had 14,272 calls for service and a total of 268 cases that were assigned out. Of the 268 cases assigned out, 145 were cleared by rest, 10 by warrant, 7 exceptionally, 12 unfounded, 45 inactive, leaving 49 of those cases from the prior year still active. This year, we brought on eight new officers, six of which have been completing all their training through FTO and Academy, they're on the road, so we're moving in the right direction. And I know Brandon has received a lot of thank yous tonight, but I will tell him also because I heard directly from the guys on patrol that he made our job a lot easier this year by doing what he done. So we appreciate it, makes our life easier. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Well, I'm going to compliment you all on going by the warning centers, and there were volunteers there, and I know it was a comfort to them to have, know that we were available in case of them.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate what you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Man, what's going on? Okay, do you have something for us?
I've got nothing tonight, other than I like to say, oh, everybody's, Christmas was as nice as our roads were, and I won't brag on Brandon or Teddy anymore, so.
Questions? Chris?
Okay, make this fast and everything. In December, we issued nine land disturbance permits, three accessory structure permits, one beer permit, one demo permit, one sign permit. We had 28 code violations, 12 pasted and resolved, and 16 are still pending. You have any questions or concerns?
Well, tell us, tell us about your new employee for codes.
Robert Raymond, yes, sir, he's doing training and everything right now, he experienced a death in his family, so prayers and thoughts with him this time and his family, and so far the, his training is going well, and he's out, he's on right now, and he's interacting with the public, and everything is going well there on the train wise.
Questions? Harry, do you have additional remarks?
Now that Brandon's head is like this big in Public Works, they've done all this good stuff. Walker diecasting has graciously donated a piece of equipment for the exploration station. D.R. Horton has created a picnic area inside the exploration station as well, and this is in addition to the moat that they provided last month. Let's see here, also, now that the holidays are over, D.R. Horton is also going to be providing us with paint to update our large conference room. We now have a new vendor that we will be purchasing some snack bar supplies from that should save us a couple hundred dollars each, each order, like Bam says, every little bit helps. The basketball league start, was supposed to start this past weekend, but with the weather, it's going to start this Saturday, and it serves 174 youth athletes. The last win meet for the high school was January 9th, and there has been a slight change in pickleball schedule, but it is in, in the way that the pickleball's like, the pickleballers like, they are getting an extra night with complete gym access, and we have received feedback from one of the contractors on the dehumification system, and we have a second one coming this week, so we should have a report for you guys on that. February 18th through the 20th is the director summit this year, and it is actually being held at Henry Horton State Park. It's for, I myself will be going in and see Jason, it's local, and if anyone would like to reserve a spot to attend that summit, it's $50 to reserve a spot. And then, February 4th through the 6th, I will be out, I am going to be attending a certified playground safety inspector class and, and testing to get my certification on that.
Well, tell us a little bit more about the grant, the 100% grant.
Oh, yes, so we are in the process of applying for the Rural Department, the Tennessee Department of Health, it's a grant for rural communities to help with health, healthy access. It could be ranged from parks and recreation departments to medical facilities, and basically, the state of Tennessee has put aside $50 million to help fund and bring up to par rural communities who have needs for, to, to increase community livability, community health, things of that nature. We're looking at tennis courts, pickleball courts, new lighting around ball fields, around the outdoor walking track at the rec center, we're looking at multi-sport courts at Jones and Harmon, also some outdoor exercise equipment at Harmon around the track there, some, hopefully some fencing and some new lights for the soccer fields because our soccer park is just, it's booming and being used, and so just lots of, lots going on.
Did you mention that one of them was resurfacing the walking track at the rec center?
It is not resurfacing that, it, it is, the lighting around the walking track is replacing the lighting there, yes, sir.
I misunderstood.
Sorry.
Other questions?
Thank you.
I think I've covered everybody.
I have one more thing. Mr. Mayor, I would like you to consider a different council person on the rec center advisory board, someone who feels strong about the success of it, so.
Okay.
I would just like you to consider a different person.
Further comments? I do have a comment myself. I'm humbled by so many people who have towed me to different places, especially my wife. Things like this happen, but I am determined to work on and do my duties as mayor, and I'm, thank everyone who has been so kind, and I hope nothing like this happens to any of you because it happens in a flash. So again, my gratitude to you all. You have a motion, do your turn.
My motion.
My motion. Councilman, your first motion, first second motion. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. We stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. You like old time, man, you take a lick and keep on.